Good evening and welcome to the second meeting of our night. We began tonight with our regular organizational meeting. Welcomed back to the fold, reelected trustee Nicole Asquith and welcomed, for the first time, our new trustee Paul Alvarez, both having waited six months for this night, which would have happened in March and April absent COVID. So, thank you all and thanks again to Steve Lord, who perhaps by dint of habit remains with us here on the Zoom meeting. Thank you. So, we look forward to his commentary going forward and thank him for his service. So, we have a regular meeting to follow, which we are in now. The first of, we had a few announcements to make. Let me just pull those up. As always, you can, you can pick up our meetings, both live and on demand, in the world of Zoom, at PCTV76.org and via Zoom. I want to encourage everybody to sign up if they have not for Village news and announcements. You can do that in the left column of our main homepage at Pleasantville-NY.gov and that will give you the opportunity to choose the agendas you want to get. And when you get them in your email, you can click into a Zoom link if you are so inclined. It remains unclear how long we'll be meeting via Zoom. We know the governor has allowed that until, what, October 5? Four, something like that?
October 4th.
The recent experience is that he skids up to the 11th hour and then extends it. Honestly, it is my hope that he does through the end of the year so that we can continue to meet virtually. And let me also say that it's my own view and also the view of some people I've talked to, that there are aspects of the Zoom meeting that have turned out to be fruitful for folks, both because they can log in from wherever they are and because we have an easier time of sharing our screen and letting folks see the backup. So, even at the point at which we're meeting again in person in the meeting room, we are committed to finding some way to continue to provide the alternative facilitation that's offered by Zoom or something like it. So, stay tuned on that. A couple of points to make. We have continually beat the drum of the census. The census is now, after some legal fisticuffs, going to end on October 6. So, if you have not filled out the census or responded or you know someone who hasn't, please, 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 tell them to go to 2020census.gov, fill it out. It makes an enormous amount of difference, both for our congressional representation in this region and statewide and also for the state and the county's share of federal money. So, 2020census.gov, please do it. By the time we meet the next time, your opportunity to do so will have expired. So, Farmers Market continues apace. It's worth noting that they have started an online ordering system whereby you can go online, starting on Tuesday and I think ending on Thursday, and order stuff online, pay for it in one fell swoop and then pick it up already pre-bagged for you at the farm market. That is likely to be a system that is ever more important as we go into the winter market, which for obvious reasons this year will not be in the middle school cafeteria because of the COVID regulations. It is likely that the farm market will continue in Memorial Plaza but be heavily, heavily focused on pre-order pickup in order to simplify the process. So, great stuff to be had. Please take a look at PleasantvilleFarmersMarket.org and consider signing up to register for the online service and try it out before you get into the winter season. The county mobile shredder unit is going to be at our DPW yard on Saturday, October 31. So, that's a month or so from today. I know lots of folks look forward to that. It's household shredding only. You cannot collect boxes and boxes of commercial records and bring them. But if you have stuff in your home that you would like to shred and be rid of in a safe manner, you can do so for free with the county mobile shredder unit at our DPW yard, Saturday, October 31. The folks at the Chamber of Commerce have assisted, as they often do, with lining up ribbon cuttings. We have a ribbon cutting for the revamped King's Crown Liquor Store that has moved around the corner from its longstanding spot on Mannville to 39 Washington Avenue. That's at 4:00 PM on Thursday, the first. That is this week at 4:00 PM on Thursday. If you were inclined to attend, please do. And as always, Shane, would you be recording that?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
But we want everybody to be socially distant and wearing a mask.
Absolutely, socially distant and wearing a mask, for sure. If you were on our news feed, you would have gotten an email, another reason to do so. Annually, we have to go through a process of flushing out fire hydrants to make sure they work and to clear in any sediment. That is going to begin on October 5 and continue through October 9. We need to do it at off-hours so that we don't cause trouble in the neighborhoods. So, that's going to happen between midnight and 6:00 AM and then again in a four-hour slot from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to avoid the morning and the evening activity. So, just be aware that, as we do every year, you may hear some activity between midnight and 6:00 AM with our DPW folks coming and opening up the hydrants to flush them out. We have gone live, although shortly we'll be getting the stickers in place for Pango, which is a parking meter payment system that will allow you to pay by smartphone. The mayor, whoever he is, has to figure out this scheme to get the stickers printed at low cost through his business connections and he promises to do that this week. So, but anyway, we'll roll that out with more detail. But it's a great opportunity. You can still pay our parking meters as you always have with a coin, but it will give you the opportunity, if you want to, to pay with a smartphone and to extend your time with a smartphone. So, a great solution and a solution that does not involve us needing to buy fancy new expensive cellular-enabled meters at every location. So, good news on that and thank you for Eric and Noreen for your good work in lining that up and making it all happen. Then lastly, I just wanted to comment about the COVID situation. We have been up and down a bit. At one point in the last few weeks, we were down to zero active cases and within the last couple of weeks bounced back up to 10 active cases. It has started to ebb back. But what is crystal clear is that if anyone thought it wasn't gone, thought COVID was gone, it clearly is not. So, the numbers have been good in Pleasantville and generally good in Westchester County, but they have not been completely stable and people are still being infected. We had a difficult report from Pace University last week. They had four athletes who tested positive. That caused a wider range of testing over at the Pace Pleasantville campus. Produced 20 positives that required that one of their dorms go into quarantine and that their sporting activities all be shut down. So, it is clear, despite very substantial efforts by Pace and by everybody else who's running programs, that the return of people to work, the return of kids to school, the return of people to sports, all represents a risk that requires that we be extremely attentive to trying to avoid the spread. There has been disagreement within the community and within communities across our region about youth sports and wearing masks on the field. As of the moment, our standard is that masks are required for players on the fields. There continues to be lots of discussion about that at the state level, at the county level, at the school district level, at the village level and with our local youth sporting organization. So, more on that as we continue our discussions with our colleagues at the school district and our colleagues in the state health department and the county health department. But as of the moment, you're required to wear a mask on the fields. You are also required to wear a mask at any time when you are in a public setting and cannot maintain a six-feet social distance. What that means is that nobody should be out without a mask in hand. And when you see someone coming, if you're not wearing your mask, put it on. It is an enormously helpful thing. Nobody loves wearing a mask, but it isn't the worst thing in the world and it's a whole lot better than seeing a spread. As perhaps you saw in today's news, New York City today had a positivity rate over 3%. That's the highest rate it's seen since June and there have been a number of spikes in Brooklyn, in Queens, in Orange County, in Rockland. The Mid Hudson region is showing a higher positivity rate than it's shown for a while. Some of those things have to do with localized spikes. The governor commented on it today at his annual conference. But what is crystal clear is that the improvements we have wrought over these many months with much sacrifice are fragile. So, I really have not very much patience with folks who believe that they don't have an obligation to join the mask-wearing crowd because it is a simple and effective way of trying to maintain the progress we have made. Nothing is more important to all of us than getting folks back to work, than keeping kids in schools that's starting to move towards an environment where we can all live normal lives, which we are decidedly not doing right now. So, please, please help. Any other announcements from anybody else?
I have an announcement. The state DOT has been rolling out details on their bridge replacement bundle project, which includes the replacement of the bridge area just north and just south of the Marble Avenue exit on the Saw Mill. The project, all in all, will run through fall of 2022. They plan to keep at least one lane open in both directions at all times during the duration of the project. There will be nighttime closures of the Marble Avenue exit, which they plan to detour traffic, again, at night to the Grand Street exit. So, they have a community liaison assigned specifically to the project. They're going to be rolling out updates and information about the detours as they come about. So, should start seeing some of their pre-staging, pre-construction activity in the next few weeks.
Did we not, did we not do this, these two bridges? Specifically, these two bridges, we did this about three years ago.
These are different, different bridges here.
Are they?
Yeah, they're, so some of the projects are actually the overpass bridges. These are the area of roadway that goes over wetlands. You probably, most motorists don't even realize they're going over a bridge at the time, but they're actually raising them up five feet to get them into the 100-year floodplain.
I kind of don't understand, but it's the state, so what are you going to do?
It's actually really good because that is what floods all the time, right?
That's, yeah, that's right. It had, this section of the roadway hasn't been touched since 1930, they report. And just, it sunk into the soil with all of the traffic and heavy use. So, they need to raise it back up.
I hope, I hope they do everything so that it's done for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, whatever it is, not three years and then we close the highway again. You know, that's, that's a problem.
Well, I mean, to their credit, what's happened in the last decade or more is that they just added more asphalt to try to raise it a few inches again. Some have the, it has been suggested that there are many, many feet of asphalt as the thing has sunk over the many years. But it has been awaiting the funding for the real fix and this, this is it.
I know, I know, difficult.
All right, any further announcements?
Yes, I did. I wanted to talk on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce that we are promoting for everyone to start thinking about, you know, their holiday shopping. I know it's, you know, we're not till October yet, but a lot of the businesses that are just starting to come back, restaurants or local businesses, they could really use the help from buying gift cards or starting to, you know, do your holiday shopping. So, if you can, please remember to support your local businesses.
Thank you for that, Paul. And I should have commented, when we're talking about the census, two shout-outs, one to Paul Alvarez, who recorded a Spanish-language PSA about the census and has been distributing widely a great service and much appreciated, and also to Shane McGaffey and to Nick Antonaccio at PCTV, who worked with the county and did some PSAs with George Latimer. And I think you can see those PSAs, all of them, at PCTV76.org. So, just one of the ways in which PCTV and our new trustee, Paul Alvarez, are delivering for the village. All right, any further announcements? Any comment from the public on any subject?
Mayor and trustees, I'll probably leave it there. So, I'll leave you guys to it. Thank you very much again and I look forward to seeing you all around. Thanks.
All right, Steve, I just sent you a new virtual background. Check your email.
Okay, I'll put it up.
Your first official comment as an ex-board member had to be an angry rant.
Yeah, I'll work on that. I'll make sure I come back with that done, all right?
We'll see that on social media. Steve, you and I'll talk, I'll help you out.
Okay, good. I can only learn from the best.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, guys. Good night. Mayor, can I ask, Lou D'Orio from Foxville, Pleasantville?
Hey.
At the last meeting, you mentioned something about forming a committee on police reform. Has that committee in fact?
So, we will have a lot more detail on that at our next meeting. We're not actually forming a committee, but we are seeking input. And I know we received your email and you have plenty of background to help us. So, we will, I promise you, we'll reach out to you specifically as well as to the community at large, make sure we get your input.
Thank you.
And we'll be hosting a couple of public meetings as well, right?
Yeah, it's, I intended to have that together by now and every day, something intervenes, but we will have it together by the next meeting, so. All right, any further comment from the public? All right, with that?
I have a comment. I just was, a question if there has been any thought into revising?
If you would, I need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve Criscito, Lisa Place, Pleasantville.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I think we talked a little bit. I was wondering if there was any, anything done about removing the inaccurate information regarding leaf blowers that's been posted on the site or at least updating it to include relevant facts?
Okay, so I sent your comments to the Conservation Advisory Committee and they have promised to review them and give us back their comments on that. And then we'll take a look at that, obviously, to assess your concerns and I'll also share with you their comments so that we arrive at.
That's fine. I mean, if it's going to be a real discussion, the real facts need to be out there, not just one-sided misleading information is, which what I feel is presented right now.
Understood. So, we received your email, I sent it to them and Andy Reiman, who had been the chief author of that with his colleagues at CAC, promised to respond, so.
And just speaking as a trustee, you know, when we have something like this come, come up, I individually do my own research and I imagine the same is true for the other trustees. So, before we have our first community discussion, you know, there will be, we will each have come to the table with more information.
Okay, would that include the letter that you guys got on August 20th from Will, part of Larry Will, part of LeafBlowerNoise.com?
Yes, all, all of the comments they receive become part of the record and get circulated as to the trustees, so.
Okay. So, there will be more, there will be more discussion on this?
There will absolutely be more discussion. So, and just to be clear, what we have, we posted the presentation made by the CAC. That is the opinion of the CAC. I know you're, you're concerned that it, in your view is inaccurate. But it, it does not reflect the opinion of the board at the moment, although obviously we're charged with coming up an opinion in the end. So, but I appreciate that, so.
The public discussion, our first public discussion is scheduled for the 15th of October at 7:30, is that correct, Eric?
That's correct.
So, you can put that in your calendar if you'd like.
Absolutely.
Before we go to our resolutions, a couple of questions in the chat have come up, two of them inquiring whether a plan has been solidified for the Girl Scout building. So, the Girl Scout building on Bedford Road at the corner of Great Oak Lane has, has been the subject of a developer's interest. The Girl Scouts have not shared with us very much detail, but we were approached by a developer quite a few months ago, who was, we understand, although don't have any data on it, entered into a negotiation with the Girl Scouts and perhaps contingent offer to buy it based on a review of its potential redevelopment use. So, that is in a residential zone. The property could be redeveloped for single-family homes. The Girl Scouts themselves operate under a special use permit that is specific to them, that does not run with the property. And the building does not have as-of right any zoning rights for a commercial use of any kind or for mixed use or for office, other than a potential not-for-profit use. So, as some of you may know, that building was originally a parochial school and when that parochial school closed, eventually the Girl Scouts owned the building and have lived in it quietly for some period of time. I gather that they have decided, as they reconfigure their assets, that that building may not be the answer for the future and I am left with the impression, without any certainty, that the building has arrived at the point where it needs an investment in the usual kinds of things that buildings need at that age. So, all I can say at the moment is that there have been rumors about various things, but to our knowledge, the building has not changed hands. We were very clear to the developer about what the zoning rights are and as soon as there is some reason to report some action, we will. But the Girl Scouts have been rather quiet about, about their process, which is, of course, their right, but has been, I will say, a little bit frustrating for neighbors of the property, so. All right, with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing on introductory local law number four of 2020 to amend chapters 148 and 185 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning the Architectural Review Board?
No move.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Welcome to the public hearing. As we commented at our last meeting and in work session, we have, for all these many years, had a five-person architectural review board. That is a board enshrined in village law. It's not a board, unlike zoning and planning, which are enshrined in the village section of state law. And we have, over many years, been successful in recruiting folks, including some architects to be on that board. In recent years, we've had a number of people, or recent months, we've had a number of people resign from the board because they moved from the village or were otherwise engaged and have gotten down to two remaining members, Eric Brotherton and Elizabeth Ward, both of whom have been doing a great job for Elizabeth for many years, Eric as a, as a new member. Eric is a registered architect. Elizabeth is a registered landscape architect. But we have had, I can report from my own canvassing, difficulty in finding other folks to join that board who have sufficient qualifications. We have a number of architects in town who are themselves before that board and therefore are recused from participating in this. So, at the same time, the Architectural Review Board has typically only met once a month and there have been some projects that have required a visit to zoning, planning and then ARB. And based on the schedules, some applicants have felt like that slowed them down. Planning, the planning commission meets twice a month. And the other aspect of that is in recent months, we've seen some big projects and imagine some perhaps to come where the planning and site plan review aspects of the project start to merge into the aesthetic and architectural aspects of it. So, with that in mind, we are considering and have on the agenda tonight an introductory local law that would merge the ARB into the planning commission and the planning commission would then take over the role that the ARB has normally occupied over all these many years. So, if there are members of the public or members of the board who have concerns, thoughts, comments, suggestions, now would be the time. All right, there being no comments?
Peter, just a quick clarification. So, with the two members, remaining members on the Architectural Review Board, are you proposing to increase the size of the, or just install them as missing?
Well, what is proposed at the moment, we have a vacant slot on the planning commission. What we propose is that Eric Brotherton, who is a registered architect, would be appointed to planning because of his professional background. That obviously leaves Elizabeth without a slot on the planning commission. But that is an unfortunate side effect, certainly no intent to diminish the role she has played over all these many years and, and as you heard earlier, the role she plays in beautification and in lots of other ways. But the opportunity to add another architect to the planning commission, given all that's going on, feels like an important one.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comment from anyone? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved. That brings us to resolution number 192 on the very same subject. Paul, let me share my screen so everyone, including people who are watching at home, can see it. All right, got it?
Got it. Whereas introductory local law four of 2020 has been introduced to amend chapters 148 and 185 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning the Architectural Review Board consolidation with the planning commission. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory law four of 2020 was held in close in September 29, 2020, and now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts local law three of 2020, attachments introductory local law of 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? This obviously follows on to the subject we just talked about in the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 193 Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the mayoral appointment of Eric Brotherton to the planning commission through April 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 194 Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the application for corrected tax rule RP 554 to remove and refund refuse fees in the amount of $479.67 charged for village tax year 2020 for property ID 16.6-4-1.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a property that was inadvertently built for services we don't provide.
That's right, it's a vacant lot.
Right. Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 195 David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on September 14, 2020 attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
As we have commented in the past, not only do we have the minutes that Noreen thoughtfully abstracts, but the Zoom transcript, which covers every last breath we took. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 196 Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of John Mahoney as a part-time school crossing guard, job code 0141, effective September 19, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joan Mahoney, for service. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Nicole, 197.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated September 29, 2020 for fiscal year 2021, covering check numbers 98338 to 98438. General fund, $124,543.86. From the water fund, $14,442.50. From the capital fund, $204,308.23. From the refuse fund, $3,993.29. From the trust fund, $360 for a total of $347,647.88.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register?
Yeah, so what's the computer consulting that's going on right now?
The computer consulting, we've got A1, who does our IT services and then O'Connor Davies, which performed a cybersecurity audit on our network. Actually, we're going to be discussing that at the next work session in more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, motion approved. And again, for folks who are listening in the public, if you are interested in exactly what we're spending money on, you can click into the payment of claims in our agenda, on Nova's agenda, which you can get through to, through Pleasantville-NY.gov and click into the detail on every line. 198 Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves an annual automotive stipend in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for Jeffrey Conum, Superintendent of Public Works, effective October third, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this matter, uh, we've discussed in in work session. Uh, we provide Jeff Conum with a village vehicle uh to and from home uh because he is a uh responder uh at all hours of the day and night to uh storms and to public works problems, water, this, that, and the other thing. Um, uh, through a quirk of the IRS law, the taxable piece of that uh has suddenly spiked because the vehicle he was driving died, and the new vehicle he will get is a higher value vehicle. Uh, nothing else has changed. So in order to uh make him whole and and produce a net pay just like the net pay uh that existed prior to the death of his auto, uh, we propose an annual stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars. Comments or questions?
This is uh judged to be a natural death and not homicide, I assume.
The the car?
Yeah, the car.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say. I think it's fair to say that it dying a natural death. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, uh, one ninety-nine, David.
Whereas bid twenty twenty dash two sidewalk and curb improvements was awarded to Costas Construction by resolution number twenty twenty. However, upon legal review, deemed not to be the lowest total bidder, and now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees rescinds the bid award to Costas to Costas Construction, Yonkers, New York, and hereby awards a bid for sidewalks and curb improvements to Palladino Construction, Mount Vernon, New York, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Story is just as described in the.
So, yeah, so um, the village, when when it goes out for its curb and sidewalk bid, basically lays out the bid and asks for unit pricing for uh specific work because it's on on call or as needed basis. Uh, these two companies were within seventy-five dollars of one another. Uh, uh, the Superintendent of Public Works preferred to go with Costas because their unit pricing in the categories he was going to use the most was lower. Um, but then Palladino Construction uh appealed that. Uh, we had it reviewed by the village attorney, and they said, no, the lowest total uh i- is uh is lower for Palladino and and to award it to them. So uh, we're working with Palladino to get him to drop his unit pricing to meet Costas. Uh, but, you know, it's uh, uh, one of those things, so.
All right, any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, two hundred. Oh, my gosh. Who is that?
Paul.
Paul, back to Paul, yes.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement of Senior Office Assistant Deborah Navah, effective November sixteen, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
So uh, anyone who's ever been and out of uh the Rec Center in its various locations over very many years, uh, will have been greeted by uh the friendly face of Debbie Navah, uh, who uh has been a character in the village in the best sense of the word. Uh, we uh will send her off into retirement uh with uh great good wishes. And uh, I can report that uh we will miss her in various ways. Uh, she has served the village well and has been uh a a great front door for lots of people interacting with the Rec Department. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved, two oh one, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the closure of Wheeler Avenue from Mandeville Road to the exit of the Bedford Road parking lot on Saturday, October tenth, twenty twenty, from twelve PM to ten PM. And further resolve that the Police Department is hereby authorized to post no parking signs and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Derek, you want to describe this plan?
Sure, so this is brought uh to our attention by Soul Brewing, um, uh, who uh spoke at our last work session. Uh, proposes to do kind of a Fall Festival, Oktoberfest um uh event. Uh, he's engaged or trying to engage other uh businesses on Wheeler Avenue to participate. Uh, that's ongoing. Uh, he is going to utilize a reservation uh platform so that uh, you know, you can only get a table, uh, an outdoor table, uh, if if you make a reservation. Uh, um, uh, I know he's proposing to have some live music uh also involved in that. Uh, he's working with the Building Department on uh the permits and and insurances. Uh, and it's going to kind of mirror what we've done of those couple of weekends over the summer in terms of setup and and road closure.
And are the other merchants all clear on this?
Yep, yep, he's uh, he's reached out to um mostly all of them. Uh, he is also getting approval uh from the building owners in which he's going to set up tables in front of their their storefront. It'll be on the roadway, but in front of their building, so we're requiring him to get approval from them as well. Uh, we'll notice it, we'll we'll uh deliver letters to each uh merchant on Wheeler Avenue and go from there.
All right, uh, is there a second? And I guess I got a second already. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, number two oh two, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the Pleasantville Village Court to apply for a New York State Justice Court Assistant Program, JCAP, grant in twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one grant cycle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie Tim Austin has been uh the Energizer Bunny in in uh applying for and getting these kinds of support. So I look forward to, um, hopefully, another successful grant application. Is it clear what uh specific project she has in mind?
Uh, Noreen, this was a late addition. I know one of uh the things was a uh a HEPA air scrubber um that we would put in uh the uh the meeting room.
Okay, that would be good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Uh, we began our evening before our organizational meeting uh in work session, and we had a couple of work session items uh to continue with. Uh, but we also have an executive session uh related to a real property matter. So uh, I thank you all for your time and attention tonight. Uh, welcome back, Nicole, to her new term. Uh, welcome, Paul Alvarez, uh, to uh his new term and to his final arrival on the board after a long wait. Uh, we look forward to working with you. Uh, thank you to Steve Lord for all of his service over all of these many years. Uh, and uh, plan your day tomorrow for September thirtieth, Steve Lord Day throughout the Village of Pleasantville. Uh, so our next regular meeting is Monday, the twelfth. Have I got that right? Uh, that Columbus Day, right?
Yeah, Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Tuesday, the thirteenth. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, there's a, Mr. Rooney has a comment.
Mr. Rooney, thank you for calling that out, Joe. Hey, Tom.
No, Tom, you're you're muted.
Okay, can you?
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, uh, two things. First off, thank you for paving Washington Avenue. I can now drive up the road and and my my milk has no longer turned into cream.
I was going to say, you said, now hold it, you said butter. It was that bad?
No, it's bitter. So, no, it's 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 a long, it's it's a good improvement. Uh, hopefully, you'll continue that to the other roads in town. Um, the second question, the my stack, the second question is, this October will mark the sixth year that Seventy-Nine Grand View, the abandoned house, is still there, uh, degrading, looking terrible. And um, I thought that the town had passed some type of new resolution or something where the town will come in and clean these properties up and send a bill to to the homeowner or whoever owns it. Or maybe I have that wrong, but but something like that.
We did, but that that resolution was allowing us to do things that were impeding the public right of way. Uh, sidewalks, trees overhanging, threatening trees. Uh, I do not think the intent or even the right would have us, you know, providing, say, a lawn service at public expense, obviously would go onto the tax lien. But um, uh, so I I can tell you, it's sitting, as just as you and I have discussed in the past, uh, uh, an enormous frustration when we have a house like that that just sits there for all this period of time. Sometimes it's an estate matter, sometimes it's a bank foreclosure matter. Uh, it eludes me why the people who make these decisions don't take uh more prompt action. But so I I'll ask the building inspector to follow up with what we know lately, but um, the village administrator uh can correct me if I'm wrong on checking it up. But someone's paying the taxes and periodically someone sends somebody to cut the grass.
There has been no one there this whole summer cutting the grass.
Oh, really?
No, and uh, I, the last time I saw somebody there, I I think it was sometime last year. Um, the the leaves are, we're looking at not only this year's leaves there, but I mean, it's just, it's just a disaster. And when I walk by that house, you see lots of herbmen running around the place too. And that's got to be a health issue that maybe that could prompt some action by the Board of Health or somebody to get whoever owns that property to clean it up or to sell it or or whatever.
So we'll follow up. I I completely agree with you. Um, it's been like pushing a string to try to get some action there, but um, maybe that is an angle. And and I didn't realize that no one had come all summer, so.
Well, you know, um, I'm going to take that statement back because I have seen no one there all summer, and it does not look like anything has been touched all summer or longer.
And the vintage car is still there.
I wouldn't swear to the fact that no one has been there to clean something up.
Sorry, but the the, it's the spirit of the point, so we'll follow up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Um, any further comment from anyone? All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, briefly, we'll return to work session, but ultimately adjourn into executive session.
I motion to briefly adjourn into work session and ultimately adjourn into an executive session.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. All right, thank you all and good night.